Oh, yeah. Well, it's nuts because when you run in the summer, but then it's the other way.
Then it's the other way around, yeah.
I lived for three years. What I know is that we're not live, yeah. Oh, Terry, you're holding up the whole show? They all have red lights. Joe, turn your speaker on. Good evening and welcome to the Montomoy Regional School Committee meeting of Thursday, August 22nd at 6:30. I call the meeting to order at 6:35. This is our final summer soiree. First on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the July 18th, 2019 meeting. Do I hear anything? Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? None? And at this time, public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment this evening? Seeing none. Recognitions?
I'll be brief, but I just wanted to share that yesterday afternoon, we had a, you know, just an appreciation lunch for our facilities crew. They've been doing a great job this summer, getting the buildings, you know, getting the buildings ready, including that little curveball on having to deal with some of the hurricane damage to some of the trees on each of our school buildings' properties. But the buildings look great. We're ready to go in terms of that. We also have the parking lots have been lined for the buses, and today, if you go outside the high school, or if you go outside the middle school, you'll notice that there are new Montomoy Regional School buses that are there waiting to take the kids in just over a week.
Thank you, Dr. Carpenter. And moving on to reports and discussions. First up, Montomoy Regional Middle School, 2019-2020 Student Parent Handbook.
Good evening, Mark Wilson, Montomoy Regional Middle School Principal, providing the school committee with an update on some minor changes to the student parent handbook for the upcoming school year, seeking your approval. Pages 1 to 4, we made some minor changes for staff names and assignments and breaking, broken links and preparing. The first substantive change is on page 5, where we had some old language around technology and student cellphone, iPod, Kindle use, and we'd like to replace that language with cellphones and personal electronic devices. That reflects a change we put in place in January of this year in response to both student and staff concerns about, I'm sorry, parent-staff concerns about students being off-task sometimes when they had opportunity to have their cellphone on them during the course of the school day. In the January 1st letter, we put a change in place that had students leave their cell device powered off and in their homeroom for the full day. And despite some initial reluctance on behalf of the students, it turned out to be a very positive change for our school. It cut down on disciplinary referrals as a result of students being off-task or distracted by getting text messages during the school day, or trying to update their social media accounts. And not only did it work well for our building, four other school districts reached out to our school and asked us for the language so they could implement similar language in their buildings. After the passage of time, I also had some students approach me and said, "Thank you, Mr. Wilson. You're actually letting me focus on my schoolwork during the school day when I don't have my device." The other adjustment has to do with attendance and how we address students that reach chronic absenteeism. That would be defined by the state as 18 or more absences in the school year. This change is a result of a new expectation from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for accountability, and our school's accountability rating is directly impacted by whether our students are in attendance every day. The challenge for us is that that variable is really not in our control. That's a household decision as to whether they send their children to school. But 10% of our accountability rating is based on our students, reducing the number of students who are chronically absent. Over the course of this past year, we put this in place in the fall after our handbook had been approved, and we were informed by DESE that this was now part of our accountability rating. The middle school lost 10% of our possible points as a result of having a very high number of students who were absent 18 or more days over the course of the school year. We sent out over 450 letters over the course of the school year, or other connections with households, when students were absent 6, 9, 12, 15, as they approached 18. And met with those, and at the end of the school year, I was less popular in the community as a result of holding households to task with regard to primarily vacations during the school year. But we had a significant reduction in the number of students who were absent 18 or more days, and we'd like to put that language and memorialize what we've been doing in practice and have that be in the student parent handbook. On page 17, we've added quite a bit of information that's common for all of the handbooks for all of our schools around health services. I will not read that aloud because it'll take me an hour and a half to do so. And those are the major changes in our handbook for the upcoming school year. Do you have any questions either about existing languages or new requests?
Any questions? Comments? Concerns? All right.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
I think I'm here for the next item, too.
I think you are. Montomoy Regional Middle School Fall Club Program Proposal: Pleasant Bay Community Boating, Discovery, Sailing, and Science.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We reached out recently to the Pleasant Bay Community Boating Discovery Center and talked about the opportunity of partnering with them to offer a Discovering, Sailing, and Science Club through our afternoon clubs proposals. They were very excited to do it. Right now, our high school works with PBCB when we do the sailing in the spring. We're proposing a fall partnership with them, and we're seeking the approval of the school committee to add this off-site and water-based club offering to our MS. It will mean we'll have to extend the insurance policy that currently is in place for the high school sailing to sort of the middle school for this activity, because it again is a water-based activity. The nice part about the fall is the weather's warmer and so is the water. You might have some questions about safety, so I want to address those specifically. All waterfront activities are conducted under the supervision of the waterfront director, Tom Leach, who is a licensed U.S. Coast Guard captain and retired 30-year harbor master for the town of Harwich. Any students must dress appropriately for outdoor activities and wear PFDs, aka life jackets, at all times when on the dock or in any vessels. A chase boat with an emergency radio is present on the water at all times. Students are either in sailboats or kayaks. Waterfront activities are canceled if wind speeds exceed 12 knots and/or the water temperature is below 60 degrees and/or the air temperature is below 50. And the two individuals who are supervising the club at the PBCB are the science director, Dr. Sarah Grissom, and the waterfront director, Tom Leach. Both of them are first aid and CPR certified. The schedule would be every Wednesday from, till 5 o'clock, whether it's early release day or not, which is fantastic. On the early release days, they get an extra set of times so they're going to use those to actually do the sailing program for those days, and the rest of the time is either time onshore or in steam activities, and all the sailings early in the fall, September and October, and we get to the steam activities and classroom-based activities in late October and November.
Great. Thank you. Sounds exciting. Any comments? Sharon?
I just wasn't clear. I know who Tom Leach is, and that's Fabio. So could you just state who's going to be present when the kids are out there?
The two club advisors are Tom Leach.
Oh, he's the club advisor.
Yep, and Dr. Sarah Grissom, who is doing, she is the science director for Pleasant Bay. So those will be the two individuals.
Thank you, thank you.
And depending if the enrollment grows, they will also be partnering with, I believe, some high school sailing students that may actually work as well in the fall with our students.
Tina, yeah?
Yeah, just the only comment. I would imagine that, or at least I hope, that some of the kids that are in this will graduate up into the sailing team for the high school.
That's our goal.
Good.
Carrie?
Appropriate for motion, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would move that we approve the off-site water-based club offering for this fall at Montomoy Middle School.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Great.
Thank you. I want just additional, yep.
Joe, sorry. Excuse me. Thank you. One abstention.
And with your approval, I assume I'll have it, I will share our whole club's brochure with you tomorrow. I've looked at other middle schools and junior high schools across the state. It is an extraordinary offering of opportunities for our students from 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning and 3:15 to 4:15 in the afternoon. If you haven't had a chance to see it yet, you can receive it in your email tomorrow. Please take a look. It's incredible what's happening on the bookends of the day at the middle school, and we thank you for adding this to the program.
Great. Thank you so much. Yes, Joe's, that was your abstention, didn't you? And next on the agenda is the 19, excuse me, 2019-2020 School Committee Goals. We had an opportunity to sit as a group this summer and work on our goals for the upcoming school year, and we have put together what everyone had suggested and outlined them in a draft for the committee to review and discuss this evening as our first reading. Would anyone like to start or make a comment, questions, edits, suggestions, quips? Terry?
I think it captures exactly what we talked about two weeks ago for a few hours. I thought that was a very productive meeting, and I think the six goals as written fits mine.
Thank you. Joanne, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, what, I just looked for some definitions for a couple of phrases in here. One was administrative team, the other was leadership team.
Can you, go ahead.
And then the things that I looked at clearly were revision and editing, not content. I thought the content, as Terry said, captured exactly what we would.
Can you be, can you point out to me the areas that you want to change as far as definition of administrative team and leadership team?
I was, if you look down on, let's see, number three, action steps, there's a lot of definitions. So work in collaboration with the administrative team. If you look up above, number three says work collaboratively with the superintendent and leadership team.
No, that's, yeah.
I think that needs clarification.
Yep, it does. You're right. Suggestions?
So we have, I guess, we define it, we call it a Montomoy Administrative Team, which is the central office, staff, and the principals are the primary members of that.
Okay, so then in my mind, I thought then that would be capitalized because it's a specific team of people that will recur each time you need.
So replace leadership team in Goal Three with administrative team?
Well, there are two, no, I would, you, Dr. Carpenter just described the administrative team, and I, my thought is I would capitalize it because it's a specific team of people.
So if we, if we call it, I think for consistency, if we call it Montomoy Administrative Team, all caps on the M-A-N-T.
That's what I, all right, now, leadership team.
So he wants it Montomoy.
Same difference.
Same difference, so we'll stay consistent with what the title you just gave it, yeah. Okay.
So you want Goal Three to read with the superintendent and Montomoy Leadership Team?
Administrative.
Administrative team.
So we're getting rid of leadership. That's what I thought I said. And it's going to read Montomoy Administrative Team?
Yeah, so the, so, so.
Sorry, Leah and I can't hear because of the blur behind us, so that's why we're repeating a lot.
So, so on three, you could replace superintendent and leadership team with that Montomoy Administrative Team since I'm part of that team?
So we're going to get rid of, so it's going to say, "Work collaboratively with the Montomoy Administrative Team to continue to monitor strategic plan."
Yes.
Yes. Okay?
Okay. I have a question then.
Yeah.
So.
Sharon?
Is that the principals, the curriculum director, the special ed director, and is that, that done?
Yep.
Okay. I just wanted to know what that meant.
Yep, nope.
And I'm having the same trouble with that noise.
Joanne, what was your next one?
Number four.
Yep.
It says, "The school will expand communications." Are we missing something there?
I think that's school committee. Is that supposed to be school committee? Did we leave out our word, I think?
I think so.
Number four.
Yes.
I think that's what it is.
So in like kind, could we label that the MRSC, the Montomoy Regional?
The MRSC, yep. So the MRSC will expand communications with the Board of Selectmen and community.
And then the rest is capital letters. Nobody wants me to do that. That's way too exciting.
So anywhere it says the school committee, you want to replace, in the entire document, anywhere where it says you want to replace it with the MRSC?
I think that would make it clearer.
It's a whole document. Thanks. Joe?
Can we move to number five, or if someone has a point for the third?
We could, yeah, we can bounce around. It's fine. I'm not sure if Joanne was done, but you guys can go back and forth. It's fine. Okay. Go ahead, Joe.
For number five, I think we can have a minor change in wording so that the goal and the action steps are more in harmony. The action steps say we're going to explore, report the discoveries, report the findings of the exploration, and then it discusses course of action. The goal is to expand, and the action steps say we look into whether or not it's a good idea to expand. I would just like, I can think of a little change which would be consider expanding student voice.
Explore expansion?
Yes, explore expanding, explore expansion of student voice. I think that's more in keeping of the action steps rather than saying, "We decided we're going to do it, and now we're going to find out if it's a good idea."
Okay, so Goal Five will change to explore expansion of student voice at school committee meetings.
And then we can drop the apostrophe S on school committees.
Expansion. And grammatically, you're okay with that? Not being fresh. Okay. Anything else on number five? Sharon?
So I think that instead of saying identify a school committee member to explore, that maybe could be left to, school committee members can volunteer to or something, because this says like one person. And I'm not against having one person as long as it's worded in such a way that Scott could bring in ideas, a lot of people could bring in ideas on that.
I think, I hear what you're saying. I think what we were trying to do is, when we were trying to narrow our action steps to give them timelines and accuracy, we didn't know if we just kind of left it open to the school committee will explore without saying we will devise a subcommittee or identify someone to actually do it. It may end up being one of those things that just kind of filters out, and we don't have any accountability to who's actually doing it and then reporting. I am open to, if it's not identifying a school committee member, saying a subcommittee, but I will say when I was doing, when we were doing the goals, I started getting a little apprehensive about how many other subcommittees we were developing, so that we're not trying to put on too much on our plate with what we already have and trying to matriculate our goals into that as well. And that's why I didn't put a subcommittee in, but it's also why I didn't do, generalize the Montomoy Regional School Committee well, because I wasn't sure if we didn't specifically identify how well the goal would be carried out to meet our deadlines. So that being said, I'm really open to, you know, that was something in our workshop, we didn't really narrow down what a lot of our action steps were going to look like and the timeliness of everything. So I understand what you're saying about identify a school committee member, and I see how you're reading that, and that it looks like it's just one person when a lot of people could bring something to the table. And if we feel a subcommittee would be more appropriate, if there is a group of people who would otherwise be exploring this and want to kind of work collaboratively, that would be fine, too. I just think we have to define it somehow, or maybe I'm wrong and we don't. Terry?
I'm glad I started off saying this was excellent. Maybe to answer this, Item Five, you know, I don't think that we need a subcommittee or even one school committee member. I would suggest we just say, beginning halfway through the first sentence, first step, "Explore how other school committees incorporate student voices and representatives." That way, the A U as chair could say to the superintendent, "Could you give five schools a buzz?" They're in touch with each superintendent throughout the district and say, "Any breakthrough ideas about having students involved in our weekly committee meetings?"
Yeah, we've tried.
And then after that, comes back to us from someone, you know, one person. I would, I would suggest that it would be, I think the superintendents have meetings once a month throughout the districts, throughout the Cape, and that could be one question that Scott poses to the five or six or seven or eight members of the club, and we'll have the news within a couple of weeks.
Sharon?
So several, I think that that's a great idea, but I also think that, I know that when I worked on some subcommittee, I can't remember which one, with Nancy, she was fabulous at looking up things, so, you know, if some, Nancy or any one person wanted to lead that, but I would just like it to say something like, "All ideas will be welcome," or something more like that, rather than, "Okay, we have these five ideas, and we're going to look at that, and that's that."
Any other thoughts? My only thought with, I like the concept of Dr. Carpenter because he is an asset and someone who's got that connection, but I also look and think about all the other things he has to do, and where these are our school committee goals and not his goals, even if it was someone that collaborates with him and then is kind of the liaison of the school committee. I just, I hesitate, you know, we need to take some ownership of the goals because they're ours, and, but I like the idea that Dr. Carpenter is a great source, so I'm not quite sure where to go with that or how that looks, you know, within identity. I think what we're all agreeing is identify a school committee member needs to come out, and it can just stay, "Fall 2019, explore how other school committees incorporate student voices and/or representatives," as Terry had stated simply, and we can kind of navigate as we go. That's fine with me. I just, I think that what that's going to do is maybe we're going to have to have conversations outside of our meetings on who is doing it, or if Scott has some information, and what that looks like, coming back to report in December. That's my only hesitation about not having something a little bit more defined, but then I'm apprehensive about defining the superintendent, because I think we're trying to own our goals a little bit more, and it's not that I don't agree with your idea, I like your idea, I'm just trying to figure out how to incorporate it.
I think, I think logistically, I think Terry's idea is good. I think logistically, I have a listserv, I could send something out to, you know, 300 superintendents that, you know, so, you know, that could solicit some feedback, but you all have a listserv, too, on MASC, and I think, I think if we in tandem were reaching out, you know, from a superintendent's perspective and school committee perspective to say, you know, just a little, you know, "Do you have an exemplar of how student voices happen at your school committee meetings?" You could get, you know, a number of different, you know, different school committees from across the state that they have some, you know, quality examples of how the student voice happens.
So Goal Five, Action Step A, "Fall 2019, school committee members to explore how other school committees incorporate student voices and/or representatives." Action Step B would be to report out in December of 2019 and discuss. When that is on the agenda, school committee members can work with Dr. Carpenter and however else we feel we're going to find those resources, and be prepared to discuss those on the agenda and present them as school committee members whenever on the agenda it fits in December of 2019. And this, it'll be more of an independent, and you can work with, with Dr. Carpenter, you can work with your own people that you have connections with, and we'll report back on that. So we're going to simplify that, take out.
Jackie?
Yes.
On that tangent, sort of, about calendars and school committee goals, and could we maybe once a month, or once every two months, have an update come out, maybe, I don't know, from you all, or Scott, or Leah, about what are things like this that are, everything isn't going to be scheduled, because some things get scheduled two weeks in advance, but some things we block out way ahead, like this, so.
Do you want a list of everything we're going to be, we're going to be reviewing this school year in advance, so that you can maybe... school year in advance, so that you can maybe start preparing for some of the discussions?
Like, November, even if it doesn't say the exact date, it's in that month, that's very helpful to think.
No, I think-
An email.
I think, yeah, like-
That's fine. I think we can actually probably create a document, much like the school committee meeting schedule, where we can take everything we know we're gonna talk about, like budget, strategic plan, we know we're gonna report out on our goals, and those, all those things can be listed on here. It's not gonna be able to have dates associated with them, 'cause they don't know where they're gonna fall on the agenda, but we can certainly compose what we can to the best of our knowledge.
Budget's a good example, 'cause we have to work backwards on that, but some of the other things, most years recently, we have put in kind of like what month about it would be. Thank you so much.
Yep, that'll be my project, Sharon, don't worry.
I don't.
So, yes.
This might help what Sharon is, let me know if I'm helping. Number four, it says, "The school committee will expand communication." If you move down to the descriptor, it says, "The school committee will seek opportunities to engage with each represented community to advocate for the monomoy regional school districts initiatives." MRSC will share consistently information with regard to district performance policy and budget. Is that, and I, I took out, actually, we took out accurate, because sometimes things change from, in a two-week period, like maybe you were voting on one amount of money, and we found out something else came in and we had to change that. But consistently share accurate information, and you're talking about district performance policy and budget.
I think she's looking for more specific.
More specific?
Yeah. I think, I, I think, I think I know what she's thinking, so I, I'm pretty sure I can come up with a document.
For instance, MCAS, those test results come out sort of at a certain time, within about two weeks or something, and so, we could tentatively have that scheduled for two weeks after what we think. I'm not looking for things in stone, but it gives us a good idea when we're thinking about more things to put on there, where are they gonna go?
It's gonna be about a ten-page document? And there will be no dates assigned to it.
So, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, so is it, I think Sharon, what you're talking about is what I would call an editorial type, an editorial calendar, so you're looking for like an agenda calendar, but we, but we can move things around, but just kinda loosely, what we're gonna talk about in any given month?
Uh, yeah, I mean, some things we can't move around. As we get closer, we won't be able to, like the budget, but yes, and things like that.
And it probably won't be monthly, it'll be everything we're gonna talk about this year.
So Leah does have something like what you're describing.
I'll work with you.
So, so we know, you know, it, it has, you know, such and such month, we, you know, we should have the vote on school choice each year, and in such and such a month, it's gonna have the superintendent's award for academic excellence, so, so there, there is an annual calendar that, that has those things that happen every year.
You're not gonna work on the annual calendar?
And I think we could easily dovetail into the, the things that we're supposed to be reporting out on based on your goals into that document as well.
Great, perfect. I'll work, and I'll work with Leah on that. Terry?
Getting more in general ways, same topic though, the thought strikes me. We've got down here for two or three times a year that we would reach out to a community, having a meeting here with citizens, just not just parents, but everybody. Let's just say, we're able to get thirty to fifty people, hope that builds. I would suggest like a little community survival kit, that for example, once we clean these goals up, as well as the strategic plan, that whenever we have that meeting, November, or whenever that first, we'd bring fifty copies of the present nineteen to twenty-two strategic plan, as well as fifty of these, and that would be passed out to the folks that maybe the next meeting in January, whenever it is, they would have a chance to look at it, in the hopes that we wouldn't get bogged down the first meeting talking about this, we'd go with a newsprint, blank. But at least we'd be, that, my thought would be, it would be something those folks would take home.
Yeah, great. And that fits right into goal number five and goal number four, so. Anything, I think we're good with number five, unless there's any other changes, and then, goal number six, anything? Joanne? No? So with the edits we made, we will have those ready for our next meeting for first reading again of the revised goals.
Just one, one point of clarification for goal six, should we go ahead and put these dates on our calendars?
Yes, so-
Yes.
So the, the time that you, you know, should ideally be present is still a little to be determined, but, but on the twenty-seventh and thirtieth, it would, particularly the twenty-seventh, the twenty-seventh is a Saturday, a Sunday reception, and it's a good form for, you know, for the administrative team, for the school committee, and for our teachers to be there welcoming the visiting team to our school. And then there'll be a presentation, a short presentation at the end of their stay, roughly midday, that, where they'll be sort of communicating out a, a brief summary of their findings.
Okay, great, thank you. All set with goals? Okay. Do we need to do a motion to approve the- What? Do we need to make a motion on the goals edits? We didn't do make a motion on the goal edits yet, right, 'cause we're not voting them? Okay, perfect. Just needed to clarify that. And then, next up, approval of the FY19 prior year invoices. Katie Icernio, business manager?
Katie Icernio, business manager. Unfortunately, we don't live in a perfect world. We have some invoices that we received after July first that were related to activities that took place in FY19, and you'll see the dates, that there were dates stamped on received. So we have three invoices. One is fifty percent of arbitrator's invoice, which would be forty-two-hundred dollars for the district. We have a seventy-five dollar piano tuning invoice, and we have a forty-six hundred dollar invoice for the youth risk behavior survey process. So, I'm respectfully requesting that we approve these, and just as a reminder, the reason that we have to ask is because we're using FY20 money to pay an invoice that's related to FY19 that was not on that encumbrance list that you approved at the last meeting.
Do I hear a motion to approve the arbitrator's bill and piano forte, and Jennifer Hall?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you. And we just have, let's see, subcommittee reports. Any subcommittee reports this evening? Seeing none, superintendent's report.
I'll be quick, but last Monday, we went before both the Chatham Board of Selectmen and the Harwich Board of Selectmen, just to share with them the, the wants to provide more options for families when it comes to early childhood opportunities. We got unanimous support from both boards to have the Head Start program at Chatham Elementary and the YMCA infant toddler and preschool program at Harwich Elementary. On last, it's all blurring together, last Wednesday was the signup day. The infant toddler space filled up within two hours. The, the preschool, YMCA preschool, as I understand, is full or almost full, so, you know, so it's, it's nice to see that, you know, see that moving forward. I also have a meeting in the next couple days with a member of the Chatham Finance Committee who'd like to sort of pick my brain on how we might be able to sort of move forward on the universal preschool. So, so we'll see, you know, while that's one town, that at least we can start the conversations and, and think about what it could look like.
Sharon?
Do you know how many or what percentage of the kids in those programs are from Harwich and Chatham?
Um, I don't, I, I don't know yet. I, I think the vast majority of the YMCA were Harwich and Chatham families. I mean, it was, I mean, there were members of our staff, there was, you know, Harwich, a Harwich firefighter who was there, you know, I mean, so, and for our next meeting, I'll have, I'll have, you know, sort of, can give you some of the composition of both the YMCA program, but also the Head Start program.
Great, thank you. And we have two action items left for tonight. We need to approve the monomoy regional high school 2019-2020 student parent handbook as presented at our last meeting. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the MRHS nineteen-twenty student parent handbook.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any opposed? Motion carries. And we also need to approve the Chatham Elementary School 2019-2020 student parent handbook. Do you hear a motion? You got this, Mary?
I move to approve the Chatham Elementary School 2019-2020 student parent handbook.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And I believe-
Just, just one quick last thing for your calendars.
That doesn't wrap it up.
Next Wednesday, eight o'clock, we will start having our kickoff with our staff for the new school year, so the whole committee's welcome to come, and we'll have some brief refreshments at, at the beginning, and eight-thirty, we'll start, start our annual remarks, and we'll launch into a new school year.
And that's next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday, next Wednesday morning.
What are the topics for that?
So-
Here it was, dangerous intruder, kind of ring.
So, the, I, I would say, the, the focus that I will have, you actually experienced, so Mark gave a little presentation of the work that the administrative team had when it came to the strategic plan, and sort of the four areas of focus that we were going to look at, and we'll just be, you know, sort of sharing that as the, as the sort of main theme as we move forward.
I have one other thing.
Yep.
This is not related to any of this, but each year, when we have our school committee meetings, there are conflicts. One of them is some wonderful coral thing that the high school does, and sometimes if we've got, got done early enough, we'd get there for the last few minutes. Is there any way to let the high school staff know when our, like, when our school committee meetings are, to either not have it done, or maybe we could be done with our school committee, so we could go to it? Something, 'cause it would be nice if we got to see some of these things.
I, I can definitely remind the, the high school administration, you know, I, I mean, they know when our school committee meetings are. I think some of the challenge is, there's so many things that, as a district, that you try to do, you know, particularly as we get close to the holiday season, you know, so even, even if we could get down the hall to something here, there's likely something happening at the middle school or one of the elementary schools that, you know, so it's, you know, they're trying, they're trying not to stack events on each other, which oftentimes means there's almost something going on every night in one of our buildings.
That is more important, but I would kind of opt for putting it on our agenda, to go from here to the auditorium for twenty minutes, see what it is, and come back, or something, just so we could enjoy, you know, see what we're talking about all the time. Just my two cents, thank you.
Thank you, Tina?
Madam Chair, could you mind if I, could I back up to subcommittee reports? 'Cause I, it just occurred to me, I think one of the subcommittees, I think, is the liaison with the town. Does it count as a subcommittee?
Or is that kind of something different?
It's just a liaison, but I'm, yeah.
So I'll just report, I'll just report that I reached out to every Harwich Select person, and I have everyone on my calendar to have a face-to-face conversation with.
Perfect, great, great work. Thank you, Tina. All right, and with that, motion? To end the meeting, to adjourn?
I would move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned, seven sixteen. And I stuttered through the whole thing.